As the curriculum is early, not as scheduled, but it was listed in the notices that we must drop right after the orientation meeting. We're going to end it, so we will go right into the regular meeting. And we like the ready, so we can be quite happy. So we call the meeting to a close. It's left to record and flag that all board members are present. Okay? I do have an announcement. Anybody who does not know, tonight's business is Duffy's very fun meeting. Sure means she's very sad about this. And then, I'm sure when she was laughing, when she said it, that it was only nervous laughing, nothing more than that. But it had, Mrs. Duffy started in the district in 2005 as our Assistant Superintendent for Business. I first got elected in 2006, and it's really been my privilege to work with Wendy all these years. She is professional, knowledgeable, calm. That goes for dealing with other administrators, members of the public, crazed board members, you name it. I don't think I've seen her...
(laughing) No, of course not.
Of course not. But there's been a few deuces over the whole time. I don't think I've ever seen her angry or agitated, and it's just, you know, really been a pleasure. I'm going to miss you, and thank you personally, and have a good tour of your service, and really helping believe us being a little strong financial position that we're in. And, well, festival. Thank you.
(applause) Over the years, I've worked with several schools, several different school boards, and really worked programs in this, like, uh...
I'm her favorite.[147.22][147.22](laughing) She reality, she is a always big surprise at three grandma that loves her grandchildren tremendously and will be helping her children to stay. Thank you, Beth.
Way late on this morning. Here it was now.
(inaudible)
Are there any members of the public who could speak on the agenda? Can I have motion for the approval of minutes as to maybe backup on the June 19th, 2018 planning session? Discussion? All in favor? Cosed? Motion passed. Person up.
I have a motion for the approval of the amendment to the leave vaccine date for Lisa Martin Melus to Volo effective July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. Some votes. Did you not pick the bottom of the amendment?
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion to the approval of the appointment date for regular substitute who is Salado Assistant Principal effective July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Shannon Murray, Special Education, effective July 1st, 2018. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Megan Maraca Health effective August 29th, 2018, July 28th, July 26th. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion for the approval of regular substitute Diobana Donamunia, Social Studies, effective August 29th, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Sharon Haggasina, School Nurse, effective July 1st, 2018. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Joseph Nikolos, Security Consultant, effective July 30th, 2018. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Irene Maddox, School Nurse, effective June 30th, 2018, after 28 years of service. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
And we wish Ivy much happiness and peace and joy in this time. I have a motion for the approval of change in title for Mr. Corlino, Black Messenger, effective July 5th, 2018. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Edith Ackerman, Grade 21, effective July 28th, 2018. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion for the approval of probationary appointment of Edith Fairwell, Account clerk at this, effective July 16th, 2018. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion for the approval of leave of absence for UAS, Senior Account clerk, effective July 5th, and also November 26th, 2018. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion for the approval of the regional review personnel for the summer 2018 season, if it will be back up. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion for the approval of the summer school 2018 personnel, if it will be back up. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion for the approval of the substitute teachers, if it will be back up. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion for the approval of the substitute teaching assistants, if it will be back up. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. (inaudible)
We leave you everyone. So this week, we have picked off our summer education program, night of study coming first through fifth graders, providing extra support and interest in that, supporting programs Monday through Thursday, except this because we have a lot of people that, you know, they have a lot. And that will sort of be mentioned out at, at the start of July. And then we have also offering our summer school program, and we're also offering outside districts as well. We will be offering, um, biology, earth science, English 10, geometry, local studies. We're also offering regional review grounds for 1 and 2 geometry, earth science, living environment, and chemistry. And then we also have a summer panel for Grade 6 through 9th graders that also provides literacy and math support, that are to sessions, and that's a very short, two-week program, again Monday through Thursday, that has an extended time that is done towards the end of July to help hone skills for our students come back into school and college. We also are doing a lot of some curriculum writing. We are enhancing our sportsway program for the income of 6th graders. We've also added additional lectures for 7th and 8th graders. Curriculum writing will include the revision for the health program, and kindergarten through grade 5, science, and kindergarten through grade 6. And we're looking to support more opportunities for students to celebrate the gap at the middle school level, as well as also providing, which has been a process in our science, to also provide opportunities for students to celebrate in science as well. We also have some additional high school lectures, especially for our 12th graders, as we collect more opportunities in the leadership department. And as part of our community initiatives, we will continue to go for that initiative. We anticipate that all of our students will be wireless, and have the most view of studio. So it's very hard going to get that back, and we have our school funding group. And in the fall, we will complete a deployment of one to one programs for all students in grade 6 through 12. And grade 5 will continue to have the white store and accessibility within the school, in the classroom. And through grade 4, we'll each have every grade level for that, their own grade level for them, so they will have access to those offices as well. And, um, so this is something we have to add, and I wish everyone the best of good seats, and enjoy.
Hi, Dr. Wu. Hi, this is Dr. Rosa. We will discuss policy.
Okay. Okay, so this is how we go through, um, sort of as manual review of full policy number 5412, purchasing procedures, policy number 5421, pyramid of legal services, policy number 5610, insurance, policy number 5623, use of school materials and equipment, policy number 568, district seat committee, policy number 6150, alcohol, drugs, and other substances for school personnel, and number 7320, alcohol, drugs, and substances for other students. According to approval for that review, can I motion?
Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. And we roll on summer schedules. Yep. And Mrs. Rosa will also discuss committee on special ed, preschool special ed.
Sure. Last week, I believe, but it's, um, I believe, Dalling, it's not listed here. Everyone is using South Planet. Steve Dalling, Director of Community Supervision Administration, where we discussed during year end, um, issues in the office with, um, educational services, and everything's happening. You're welcome.
And Mrs. Duffy will discuss financial matters and business.
All right. So, our treasurer's report, 2044, so we got to my campus in March 30th. There was full time, and 37,000, and 96,000, and 66,000. Balance on the discount 24th of Thursday, was 42,429,000, and 89,000, and 82,000. And the balance in our accounts, the first was 4,067,379,000, and 379,000, and 53,000. Next item is budget transfers. I have a motion to approve budget transfer number 3575, number 3519, the general line, and number 34901, and number 3514, the cash.
So, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Closed? Motion passed.
We have a donation from the class of 2018 at Los Angeles High School, valued at $1,062,400. A drinking fountain, a water station, and a football field. I have a motion to accept the donation.
Discussion? We have two questions. There's nothing useful?
I don't know if that donation is good.
Okay. And does the donation, does that include installation or statues?
Um, a statue from, yeah, there's, um, a statue from the school.
In house?
Yes. Is it going to be like the football scoreboard? Or should not? Okay. It'd be a simple installation, take out all drinking fountain, and put in like new time.
I would just ask that that donation be designated from the class of 2018. It's not, it's made of beer, so, right, that's for, that's for the class of 2018. That's awesome. They should never go over. That's not new, but...
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
Uh, the next is a resolution. Uh, in addition to the more nutrition directors association, for other areas, I have a motion to that resolution.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Closed? Motion passed.
The next is a resolution to the exam in the breakfast program of 2018.
So, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion to approve the service agreement for tactical markets of wide-based services. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion to approve the health service contract for 1715, the loan most facilitated, amount of $1,076,000. Some votes.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion to accept the employment contracts to access service services, including entry, education, research, and healthcare therapy.
Good. Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed.
I have a motion to accept the employment contracts to access service services, including entry, education, research, and healthcare therapy.
Good. Okay. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. And Mrs. Duffy. Aside from wishing your brother a happy Fourth of July in the great summer, I would like to welcome Mrs. Patty, who is, of course, replacing Mrs. Duffy as our Assistant Superintendent for Business. Congratulations, and as well to welcome Mr. Anthony Hello, who is our newest board member. Welcome both.
A couple of quick items. First of all, I know we mentioned we covered up next day's graduation, but this day's graduation really was a beautiful ceremony. Class of 18 was exceptional class, that really presented themselves well. Dylan and I spoke about how we lamented having to follow the Dylan story with the Victorian, because they really are so well spoken, and did such a really beautiful job with some beautiful messages. So, we very much are grateful to this student in that class, and it's going well as they go on to their various pursuits for September. Right before I walked in, I became aware that the roads leading to Peachtree Middle School are going to be paved on Thursday. So the residents can just give a notice sometime this evening, and it's scheduled for paving or milling, and then paving on Thursday, and I guess Friday. So just be aware, if you have any reason to visit district office, the building, of course, is also next to the roof project. And finally, I too would like to extend my gratitude to Mrs. Duffy. I've known Mrs. Duffy, um, I guess for about 13 years now, in the variety of capacities. She owns the business official, and I think she's been a student, and, and the word that always comes to mind is unstoppable. Somehow, no matter what, um, you know, Wendy presented, used that way to make things happen, always with the best of the two kids. So I truly appreciate having that opportunity for Wendy and her students.
And Mrs. Burns. And Congress. And I was, there was a couple of things in the suite. Mrs. Cassidy.
Yeah, I can help, I can. Because I tended to have two board meetings about monthly research over the past two months, I learned some facts, which I would, which I would never know. Fact one, the 30 man of card birthday classes in that version are placed into four sections. Fact two, 20% of the former third graders are in social emotions of death. Fact three, there are students that perform inclusion, but man of card will not be in inclusion class, they would rather have their child upgraded by 89% to most students. Fact four, man of card has historically had the widest class in all schools. Fact five, the teachers had to meet on numerous occasions and ask for parents to help manage the reader problems of the class. Fact six, 11% of our children are even below level, lack of rule and claim that discipline problems. Fact seven, the third graders of two years ago that took field trips are not class or not up. Fact eight, according to the result published in American School Course Journal, and featured in many theoretical, research shows that best confluence in child education happens by a size decrease to less than 20. This is how, this is how their education is improved. Small class size results in higher academic achievement. Evidence also suggests that teachers generally have better morale in small class, and our best strategy is to be overwhelmed by only seeing a variety of students, the different background, condition of life. As a result, they're more likely to provide supportive environment where students are comfortable, special and self, and actively participate in the class. Students tend to pay attention to these little activities, complete assignments online, and collaborate with their classmates. They take initiative with homework and ask questions to get more information. Numerous reports indicate that small class students are less likely to be disrupted as a part of the learning. These findings have allowed us to conclude that building immediate and long-term family for small classes, of course, keep their students competitive. Fact nine, all of the above have greatly benefited because of a lot of common fourth graders in that. In fact, we can make the fourth grade classes, at least, in 2017, 2017. However, this will only reach the same level in 2018. Just because you tend to something, doesn't mean you should. Fact 10, even things are weighted on, and simply monitoring the overall risk of the summer, if not good enough for me, if not good enough for my son, and if not good enough for me, child. I have a question for you, Ellen.
Are you suggesting, I hear, that all of our elementary school classes are below 20? I don't, I'm not suggesting that they all be below 20. I'm suggesting that the research showed that if, when, when they are below 20, they must be below 20. However, with this group of students, I did research, because of the new students that we had, and the problems that we had, it would first mean of this group of our children that we, we have been having this. I know my son, I have another son, and he, he defined with, like, pursuing, not playing, he'd go ahead, he chose, I'm not saying, and, but, but, so, and the reason why I asked you this question, because advocacy was great, or advocacy for small class sizes is actually one of the things that we're, to the Board of Education, love this, with those class sizes, just around our school. And we've worked really hard to, to keep class sizes at numbers that are manageable for the age, and the teacher, and such management issues. So at the last meeting, you know, I didn't engage much, because I really just wanted to hear and listen to what was being said. So if you have some questions, and I'm not going to pose them all to you, I engaged with conversation on some of them, but some of what occurred last month, talked about issues that were on the classroom, that I didn't really hear or feel how that was addressed during this school year, other than waiting from school year to end, and then asking for some small class size. So for example, I did not hear about how, when you're told as a mom, or, you know, as a parent, that your child would not be met with because they, you know, have exceeded expectations, so they would not get a good reading. How can it stop that? Why, why would you accept that as a parent? Why would you then go to administration work, or have a teacher conference, and say, "That's unacceptable, then, there, and now"? And so, it kind of, I want to understand, you know, how that grade was managed for this school year.
Well, I think what I learned, was that when the student class, that we, um, we, as parents, we kind of, we all were very disappointed that, that classes were already in poor classes, to turn it back. But we naturally just thought that the, the number outside had changed, which when I came to the meeting in May, I found out that wasn't the case. So it was a mistake, so we, I think, we didn't know, or maybe I didn't know, as a parent. My concern with my child is he's reading a broad life. He's, he hasn't died, he hasn't, he doesn't have every issue, that, well, I mean, I'm going to do issues of, of a lot of children. I mean, my child is 20, so...
So I'll just go back to, I'm going to, I'm going to sit here about, you know, the research that, that came, you know, in low end of 20 students in class, because we're going to do that, of all, as a school board, and as a community, if we're going to address that, and we're going to accept that as, as research basis for our work forward, every single classroom in the school district will have to be below 20. Do you understand that, Mrs. Duffy?
I understand that.
So, so, and that's the, one of the requirements that we have to, to, to cite research that says, yes, 20 students can be better than you. However, we saw what happened last year with this summer, and my, my son was in bed at 26, and they go play in the 24 and 25, and they didn't do that. And they did well in classes of 20, the year before. So that's why I brought research into it. Yeah. I, I brought the research just because, just that habit, because I think, you know, research is research, and I wanted to research, and I'm just saying, well, this is like thing. It's more great. And research is great, and so is the data about how the children are, are actually doing in classroom, which is very important to this board that we hear, you know, those specifics, and whatever data we can learn from the educational process. So, and Dr. Wu shared a lot of that with us at the last meeting, and, you know, we're still looking at all of that. I'm just going to ask one more question about the 20% of students who are in social, emotional, speech class, do you reference seeing the social worker, or IEPs, file work, and what's, is it just, what exactly did that...
That was, that was seeing the social worker.
Just seeing the social worker.
That being, you know, the, the, the social worker. I wasn't able to get all the percentages of, of all the children.
I mean, just because, in my experience, if there are behavioral, social, emotional, both issues, there's a process in the school building, which is to go to, you know, the school building scene, to do a child study, to talk about, you know, what services can be placed through the committee on, on special education. And so, I'm curious to know, those that have traveled, did that...
I traveled that, okay.
You did personally, but when you say 20%, do we have 20% of that grade level in foster education, to their success?
Five, 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 five.
Five students have what?
I said it before. And then, of course, social worker, we put both my social workers and all the children, you know, children's, children's this year. They have children on that new research, whether it was, um, nutritionally, um, youth counseling, you know, maybe not seeing the social worker this year. That's good, but, you know, so...
Five students that we program to receive social work, counseling.
Maybe that was on your file, or, or, that's...
Thank you. Mr. Cassidy. No, thank you. Cassidy.
So, Mrs. Burns, we have a chance to decide about the, the members of the special ed department, most of the private office officers, and most of the district, we also have social and emotional, and, and, we come forward in class, and we're still, and we're trying to, and, 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 we also have, 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 we also[1800.12]
I wish you could go back in time and review third grade class sizes. That's in the past. We all make mistakes, and we all know that unfortunately, in reality, we cannot go back in time, review, undo, control, so we could step back. Um, it's just not possible. As an educated professional and a great listener, we should learn community state, take into account that inherent, inherent viewpoints, and then make the best decision. Uh, Miss Burns, with knowledge of where this will be worked for you, how can you, that class size of twenty-four to twenty-seven students would be a supportive resolution maximizing student overall achievement and positive testing of life? How? Let's disentend this at last. This moment in time, we are concerned about addressing the needs of our children and their fourth grade experience. Pete, may we consider to have a communicative fourth grade parents, what is your vision, goals and objectives with this specific group? Pete, don't be that average superintendent who would set goals that are behavior consuming each week, construct to be that great superintendent who would set all goals that say effort be committed, such as creating additional section, regardless of the process of removing all yourself. As you're aware from a previous meeting, in which I have received no response, I have done some research and review on history of what's been supplied. I have watched several board meetings, and I believe I gave quality information. So, my overall observation is that when the issue of class size in Florida, there are strict responses, with no direct answer, and everyone has tended to tiptoe around the issue for many years to no resolution. Re-minds are excuses, including but not limited to involving, redirection of funds to other resources, search for professional development, additional social workers, meeting and staff teachers, et cetera. Again, these additional resources are much needed and are very, are very enhancing our future. Obviously, this is not resolved via class size. In order for students to perform at all levels, there needs to be conjunction of the additional resources plus the appropriate class size. Once this is ethically established, we physically provide the common education the community has come to expect. Let's not repeat the same mistake as last year. Please open number of work for exceptions for two thousand eight, two thousand nineteen school year. Upon completion of this stressful year, our children deserve to be placed in a reduced size classroom setting, in which improvement of aggregate performance, behavior, interaction, and student engagement will be maximized in the entire incoming school year. Uh, no, I mean, I don't, I, I, yeah, I just want to, you know, beginning of last year, within the second week, I called me, because I thought that there was something not right. My son, at the beginning of this, this second year, within the second week, I pushed away my son, he had me, having just come home, and just breaking down every single day. I called me in, within the second week, with the, with the teachers, and we had, and they have been, we have done, we have exhausted every possible option that we had. We had, I made contact with, with me, we go together, I, 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 we come, it's outside the gathering, inside, and it's just, you know, what he's getting, services and I'm ready, but obviously, but if I really feel, it's just, it is that, that when you're in a class, it is, it's environment in itself, and you have this long experience with behavioral, social, emotional, and then, and then you have everything around the class, and it's distracting itself, has about, you know, postures and, and you can, it's environment, it's repeat, these things like that. So, just, just to, just to stay focused, it really is, just, it's just that it's just that, really, that now students in the class are always focusing on something, and he wasn't getting the, you know, the education experience, and he started paying for the class, gets outside, he gets four oh four, or whatever, all, you know, resources that he gets. He's not. I mean, only, only I think he does well now, is when he's in a large classroom, he has twenty-six students. It's just too much. It's too much. And even teaching myself, uh, you know, I, I know, the difference between a class size of twenty-five, I need just twenty-three or twenty-four, a big difference in these, that you have that student interaction, you have the ability to engage with those students. Big difference.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dr. Erin Albert, of the vice leader of the social and mental health. I'm happy to speak tonight because I really wanted to speak to, maybe it's a different perspective than some of the others, but still the same goal we have. Um, you know, my son, uh, he does very well in school. My son gets great grades in school, um, and I found there's a difference in our experience from his second grade to third grade when he went on to larger class sizes. So, he's a type of student that gets a hundred on a musical exam, and that's wonderful, and I'm proud of him. However, sometimes students that do really well in a bigger class setting, they also cannot reach their maximum potential because the students, the teacher doesn't have the ability to provide attention to our students. It's just a numbers game. Faculty to student, we show this thing, we walk to the levels of education, but I give a tour of the education seminar, or I take one, the first thing I look for is how many, um, people are going to take the course, and how many people are going to lecture. If you sit in a bigger arena, you're going to get a superior education. So, I guess where I'm going with this is that I don't understand what happened between the second and third grade, it went from four classes to, to three, don't really feel it's changed in the overall moment, like we corrected it fundamentally correct, but in what I'm told, that's not the case. So, I just want to understand why it changed and why it can't go back. Is there anyone that could, that helped answer that? I don't, I wasn't. Is anyone?
I, I don't, I don't know what section this student's taking. Right, okay. So, then, we have a diverse group of students, which we are diverse, and there are students that do very well, there are students that do in between, there are students that have a, with a behavioral support or modification. Having one student in the driver role, and one, one teacher correcting all that, the more people they have to be responsible for, they just can't do the same level of quality of patient, right? Would anyone care to debate? Second chair, say?
You know, it's, it's, we need to comment on that, not in the flesh, and you may, you may not know, I'm also a manager, so I've been a publisher teacher, I've been in the classroom on twenty-eight second graders back in the day, um, and I've been in low class sizes where I've had sixteen or seventeen picks to mentor. Right, uh, so I, I really cannot comment on that, because I don't know the teacher's experiences, I don't know what the management skills are, I don't know where that is, but what I do know, but what I do know is that, I do know that there was support systems within the school itself that should have been addressing these all year long. And so, what, what my question is, is that why, why haven't we heard that? So, have you been? That's, I mean, that's like really what I'm trying to get at.
Me, again, my son, I'm not going to complain, I said, my son didn't get a grade, my daughter didn't get a good cell, because depending on what you perceive as what you're looking to gain, or what you're, that you're looking to achieve, you would say from a statistical standpoint, you did well. What is he achieving his maximum potential? I cannot believe so. I don't think scoring perfectly on an exam means that exam's challenging them. Like, for example, those state exams, that everyone, most students do not want to take, they're elected to take. My son put in money to take, his reason was he wanted a challenge. He doesn't want to just keep doing things that are maybe not high enough for him, there's no enrichment program in the school. You don't have anything for kids that do well, there's no gifted program. So, at the bare minimum, I would like to see there be a smaller class size, because when he had that experience, I will tell you, that he was given extracurricular homework and extra things to support him, like the second grade teacher, when the class size was small. And again, maybe it's an attribute to that teacher, maybe that teacher was better set, maybe she had better abilities, that's certainly debatable. But, it could also be pointing back to another obvious change. So, now, we're going to another year, and I'm being told it's up for discussion, so that's when I, I probably was waiting. So, had I known, I would have come sooner, um, and as I become a more, um, I guess more familiar with the system, because I've got, this is my little son, and he becomes a relatively new, in the education system here, so I have a lot of experience to tell you, or to, but it explains why you would want me here this evening, because I think sometimes you hear so much about the students that are struggling, and then you might say, "Okay, well, we're giving these extra resources, and maybe this parent is having an issue, maybe they're just looking for a skateboard or a class size". And I'd like to tell you that I think it's important for every student, no matter what their level or what their needs are, I think it's something that I've always, as a student, and a long-time career student, I've always had, um, value, meaning back to the situation, is how I chose the university I'm studying at. So, I think it's something that me as a whole of this district should value, and I think we do, because the other elementary schools, I've told the school, the class sizes, it's a lot of, you know, twenty-two.
Open up Mantis up in the lower right end.
Open up.
Open up the booth and Mantis.
Or identical, they all have three classes.
Well, just that I found that they have, they don't have an average of twenty-four and twenty-five in the age, less.
Okay, so I was told they have twenty-six per class.
Well, this way, there's one section of twenty-six and two sections of twenty-four.
Okay. So, um, so when I made twenty-five.
It's a, it's a goal to score to zero.
Okay, all right. So, then, yeah, what I, my, my question to you is, when I went to this section, let's assume on us the law, and why can't we have a that?
Well, that's, that's, I don't know if I can answer that yet, but what I will tell you is that everybody here wants what's best for our community. So, it's really something, um, classes, small class sizes is a topic everyone will discuss on, like, in time, really, not the only building to come and say we want small class sizes. Um, you know, there are some different traits, and there's some equity that we have to live that, and I'm just, I want that.
Because I did for other schools, which, so I have, my dad is a teacher in a national county of schools, where, where the class size there is twenty-two, twenty-three for the elementary school. They also have an enrichment program, they have these, so I wanted the class to be competitive, and I noticed that also have the same, they offer the same quality of education that they're offering. So, I know it can be done, and it's done locally, so I would just like to see it happen here.
I just want to say that, yeah, question four, why didn't you come after? Well, we were, as soon as I signed in, we're starting, as soon as our children had problems, we were at the school. However, however, just like you, you can confirm that you don't know what happens without them. We didn't know the numbers, we didn't know the class sizes. I just learned with that. So, if we had known that the class size, you know, the class is going to be twenty to twenty-four when we started, then maybe we would have all been here sooner, okay? Well, I'm just, I never got that.
I agree, okay, so, I'm just going to try my question to you. Uh, not, not where have you been with class sizes in large, but if, if your experience of these, of your children, anxiety about coming to school, not doing well with their subjects, and you're not getting the, uh, the feedback that you need to from your village administrator, you know, your next level, we'd be expecting a step, and so, that's what I mean. Why didn't we know earlier that there were these, these issues in the third grade? And, you know, that's, that's what I mean, not that the class size is large, like, all year, we're assuming, well, the class size is large, but, yeah, I think so, but, good, you know. You know, you have years where, you have...
Miss Burns, her from Maine, she worked from Maine this year, and I break, I had this gathering at the evening, um, I had very sudden tests.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, it's not, it's like, right, because you referenced also that, you know, integrated class, such as for some kids, it's needed, but it's not integrated Mantis, so I, I don't really want to identify where that is, but you're, you're kind of doing that formula already, saying that, well, maybe some of the students in this particular grade need more services in the integrated section, just because we're not offering the Mantis up. You're, you're using a general education classroom, which can be contributing to the issues in the, in the classroom, so, there's a lot of stuff going on, right? There's a lot to breathe there, because a lot of stuff's going on.
So, I just want to comment on, like, one, you don't go through school and, and, and in the beginning of the school year, you know what I said, I went off to the second week of school, and, um, and, and, it's a process, it's a process, then we all, we do nothing, we try different, nothing in strategies, we try different resources, you know, and then we reconvene, it's only two months, by the time, you know, the school year is over, and it's like, oh geez, well, you know, then I realized that the class size was over contractual, um...
No, it was, it was contractual, pardon me, it was twenty, it was twenty-four, then they have ten.
Ten percent, so it was all over, it was like ten percent. Um, but, so, it gets to that point where it's at the end of the school year, and now maybe, you know, because they have resources, they're going to, you know, but it's just, and, and it's the, the class size itself, you know, it's just, it's a, it's a whole process.
So, I understand, so, just correct me if I'm wrong, because I know a lot of, okay. Um, you went through your school year, you had a rough to go, and it seemed like everybody pretty much did, and by the end of the year, you discovered class sizes are hard, and now, so then you're taking that and saying, "Well, maybe this has something to do with why we had such difficulty".
Exactly. During the meetings too, I would say, and I never knew that everybody, I never, like, I never thought to ask about the class size, when you, when you should express it, oh, it wasn't even a concern of mine, I had no idea. And, um, I know it was still, right, you know, just put file away, and, um, I just, just, I had to be honest, my experience is very different with my, right, right away, this was when I'm throwing three, like, um, five, four classes to three, and my son came home, and he was explaining to me how many more students were in the class, and I'm different in this, and he's very verbal, and comes home and explains everything. So, I was very well aware of it, but I also did not know what criteria were as far as why it happened, and at first, I didn't know if this equal or what's all the classes. So, for our goodness sake, maybe he got the big class, and maybe there was two others that were twenty-three, twenty-four, maybe this, his class, as we said, somewhere one or two more. So, the assumption should be made that that was the class he was in, and then, as the year ended, I thought, "Oh, there's probably a likelihood everyone corrected, and go back to the four classes", because I couldn't understand sort of why the one class was eliminated, there's no one that's able to answer for me. Nobody's come up with an answer, it's like, that class was eliminated because of this. Was it a conscious decision, was it a moment decision, nobody, nobody's explained that. So, I still don't understand. So, really, it's really silly, no matter what I was discussing about when you could have barred up, because the end of days, why do we, why did we lose a class, why can't we have that?
It's not that it's silly, it's just, I'm sorry, maybe, I'm sorry, so, but I'm, I'm saying that it, it's, it's because everyone's got different, um, backgrounds, so to speak, so how we got here may not be all the same.
So, I, I don't know what the, specifically why that grade has changed, that, that children, I mean, in general.
Sure.
You know, what goes into it? When you look at, this is where it's a little, you look at what grade we're talking about, certainly, uh, we've older the child, uh, the more students typically go into a class.
Okay.
Um, we look at equity across the district, as Miss Rose said, it was clearly, if we're going to have, and this gets to the twenty children in a class, and everybody would want to have fifteen children in a class.
Nice.
But, but, the point is that it's not affordable, right? And, and again, you're dealing with equity, um, you need to have similar, that's difficult, but similar class sizes across the district. So, I, I'm, I'm doubt that these are all the things that went into that decision last year, as has been expressed, I think, um, the twenty...
I think we opened, I'm, I'm, I had to guess, and I had to guess, we probably had some late enrollment, and, it wasn't, it's not, okay. Right, so this year, correctly, what later, if, if, we, we... We had a...
At the last minute, so we could end up with a plan for the three at a certain maximum, and maybe we'll potentially go over even at that ten percent.
We can't hold it.
So, then what happens then is the whole, the four class.
Depending on the timings, if they're not right off.
That happens, at that point, if it has to.
So, so, last year, we had, it's certainly an anomalous situation, um, it's, it never happened before in my time here, um, we had a very large number of students that came into the district late in the summer. And, and again, I don't have, yeah, no, no, I've never seen that. And, um, so, and again, I don't go specifically in this case, but my assumption is that, as Miss Rose said, that that's what drove, and, and you know, that could turn out where you could get one child in... And, um, so, and again, I don't go specifically in this case, but my assumption is that, as Mr. Rosa said, that that's what drove. And, and you know, that could turn out where you could get one child in one grade in each building, that really wouldn't be a big deal. But if you've got a bunch of kids in the same grade in the same building, you lead to a mess. Now, I, I think, we're not sure exactly how this passed us, that this then drove the number to that point, that Mr. Rosa says it was contractual. But as somebody pointed out, um, when you were, sorry, I don't remember which one it was, just because we can doesn't necessarily mean we should. I don't think any of us would have been comfortable with that number, and would not have been comfortable with that number. So, on the other hand, of course, you know, and I, you know, it's, it's, Sam's brain, I don't know, maybe, but it's the numbers that we're talking about at this moment, although, then, twenty-six, twenty-seven, right? I, I, I don't know why it's twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-seven, but.
That's, it's seventy-four, it's in the first line down, um, I think, at one time, I think it might have been one, I think one.
Why aren't they ranked as second?
Twenty-four, 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 twenty-five.
And this year, they were told you were twenty-seven, right?
They were just twenty-seven.
Twenty-six, it's twenty-six, was the highest.
Twenty-six, it was twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-five, and two, yeah, so it's twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-six. It's, I, I couldn't spare two, I, I'm sorry, I saw the words, I didn't know. Are you saying this year?
Yes, at this moment, and I ran the numbers five hours ago, we have seventy-four students that are anticipated to incorporate.
Why don't you tell us your name and address for the record?
Kara Ordon. Kara Ordon, she's a people, she's a lady, she's a mentor. Um, I just wanted to reference something you said, I don't know if I am reading, if I understood it. You said, um, why wasn't anybody doing drafts, or you're needing to improve as a manager teacher? I, we have, and I might have some, I probably understood you. The teachers, at least have some teachers, because that class, I was like, twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-four, um, she was amazing. Ms. Morrison was amazing, the team was amazing, the social worker, it, it wasn't the teachers not having good management needs, or that the principal, the administration wasn't meeting the needs of our kids, or at least my, my stuff. And I tend to be proud of her, and so, well, that I spoke to, so, I think that, you know, we've got a very different picture from what occurred last year, where it was combined, it was combined, it was compared to the falling of the Twin Towers, that's what.
Falling of the Twin Towers.
Last month, compared to the third grade to.
No, no, I, I, no, that's misinterpreted, I said, I watched my son collapse at the Twin Towers.
Yes, yes.
But not because of, not because.
I mean, I can't, I can't rationalize, like, it was, the, the picture painted last month was, was, was this?
And, but. And it stayed in your mind, so.
Well.
Well, I think personally, her experience may have been that, with this child.
And he would come home and just like, just literally just let it roll out, he would hold it in for a whole day as much as he could, and just come home and just, he was home, and he would just let it roll out. And it, it, it was a, it was a hard experience, that she didn't actually really was, and I think he's just pretty handled. The watch, the watch, and I, I made some great meetings, and I had, I had several meetings, I'm sure they got me, I mean, we got people, I had several meetings, we were supposed to be here, more than I think I've had the whole entire, this whole entire school career. Um, and he just, you know, he decided, uh, every meeting, I said, you know, I, I, to be discussed, but he was, he was the, um, you know, to the end of the year, he was, he started babies, the class size, so he just couldn't handle being in that, in that walk. So, I, I was in there.
I, I think the bigger picture here is across the board, and, and we've had this discussion, that I don't think it should be an individual class thing. However, you do have to consider certain classes have different needs, and children have different needs, but it should be across the board. Obviously, you all adopt small class sizes, why not do some of your kids go to these schools and, um, you know, attend them? So, I think the bigger thing here is just, when you have big class sizes, it's hard to be holding these with the kids. You can be the best teacher, and I am a teacher, I taught New York City Public Schools, where I had twenty-seven kids, twenty-eight students left. I taught in grade nine, it's two grade, where I had fifteen students, it's a big difference, it is. So, obviously, I think we're missing the big picture here, these little kids, they have high needs, some of them, but like your son, my son is high achieving, he does well, his needs were different. I think just when you have a big class size, it's hard to meet all their needs, and third grade is more difficult than second grade, fourth grade is getting, definitely more, you know, difficult, but I just want to reiterate.
There are resources that clearly are not being utilized in this situation, because we referenced students who, who probably, um, benefit from the integrated section more not, more in participating in the general education sector.
I don't, I can't speak to that.
So, I'm just trying to, to read it all out, and really, and, and at the end of the day, is, is the small class size is really the answer for you.
I, I think, frankly, K to three guided reading is too much, huge. And I talk about the lack of the reading right for rent in this district, there really isn't a very strong, solid reading right for rent. I've conversed with children, uh, teen parents all across West Islip, they just don't come home with a guided reading book bag. They don't read every, they don't have books that are signed every night to read, that's too much.
Well, they, they actually, you do have.
Some children in blue have an anthology.
And I'm doing it, it's an issue bigger than this, because the school board has proposed that.
Please. But I, I just wanna finish my thought, nobody in my son's school is coming home with a book bag. My students each get a colored book bag, I provide it to them, they come home, they have three to four books on their level, that should be happening. I have a, well, I have a second grader, child entering second, I'm sorry, child entering first grade, and now fourth grade, that's, you know, for some, four years, never once, none of the parents. Blue, they have this anthology, that's like a Dick and Jane anthology from like thirty years ago, that come, uh, that comes, uh, baby, sorry, that comes.
Basil beater?
Yes, it's that, but it's very, very old, that's what they read from, they don't have guided reading books.
Let's, let's, let's skip that.
But, but I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, no, we really need to stop that.
Okay.
If that's what's going on, yeah.
I think it's what Mrs. Rosa's saying is, if that's, that's what's going on, then we have a different issue here at our, we do, we use, um, we are, uses attendance, and the literacy library, it's rather high, because they, bless you, it's not a state. We have been, uh, we have adapted the, the units of study from Hawkins, so we have been reading and writing, we have spent, um, in every, every school at the elementary level, has a literacy coach, we have been in every single classroom, through the writing program. So, then I think that's a whole different issue, there should be key books, there should be just writing books, there should be different statistics, they should be doing all those things, so that is the different. Even like writing, you know, there should be a writing notebook, there should be, I, my son had it this year, this was the first year. My daughter, you know, you, you should be doing drafts, you should be doing deals, they should be just writing, they don't, there's none of that. I am a huge T C person, I'm very well versed in it, I'm trained in it, I act, like, it's not happening, it's just not. And a lot of the parents aren't aware, they don't know it, I'm an educator, so I'm very aware of it, a lot of the parents aren't, so they don't know, they're like, oh, okay.
Then I have to go back to, we opened up the statement, you said to me, wait a second, I want you to know that what great things are going on in the classroom, and the teacher, and the administrator, and, okay? Because now you're on a whole different subject here.
I am.
Okay, and so you have to understand what I'm talking about, there's a missing piece that needs to be addressed in the curriculum and instruction of classrooms. Because everything that Dr. Wilson is talking about, this board has supported financially, we've put in, we've put, um, uh, resources behind, uh, professional developments, classroom libraries, all of it. If it's not happening, it's a problem.
So.
Hold on, can I just address one, one, one thing, please?
Okay, ma'am.
Okay, appreciate it. So, I actually spoke to that, um, to this topic last time, and my son came home and said, he has a, she was a great teacher, given the time she had with the twenty-two students that she had. I, I do think she did a great job of what she had, um, I could, it could have been better, of course. Um, he came home, they, they think she didn't have enough books, she said. So, I said, I don't understand why this, he came home, one book was reading chocolate touch, and I said, how come he's not? And I, well, then, the social worker was on the phone with her in the same room, for whatever reason, and we had a conversation about it, and she said, because just like not enough time in the day to meet up this group, because he was the higher group. So, he got met with, I, I don't agree with it.
It's nonsense that somebody say that, you don't really accept that, that's nonsense.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, this is, this is not the same thing that we're, so there's a disconnect here somewhere.
We'll follow up.
We'll follow up.
I get with Ms. Morrison, who's a former teacher, we followed up the laptop, my son didn't start first class.
So, so, so this is, this is really, I think, what, I'm trying not to speak for Mrs. Rosa, because it could be the issue.
A problem.
But, um, I, 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 I think what she was getting at earlier, in, when she said, you know, when you guys been, was this, right? Last, last, last month, there were, there were some things that were said that were extremely disturbing to us, and we went back and we said, okay, um, we want to hear answers, because as Mrs. Rosa says, Dr. Wilson has devoted an extraordinary amount of time and effort to re-in fostering, implementing a literacy program here, which we understand is being carried out. So, as Mrs. Rosa said, they went back, they asked questions, they were told things that indicate disconnect between what you're all saying, and what we are hearing, and that's, so as of right now, we are going to go back and follow up again, follow down the stories. So, um, I don't, you know, there's really nothing else I can say at the moment.
Motion for a small ass side.
Um, points for humor, but. And I have a motion to adjourn to executive session nonetheless, where we will, uh, discuss personnel negotiations and litigation. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will convene the public session outside of. Okay, we'll probably do it here, and then we will open the doors and go back to the public session for any votes that may be required. All members of color are welcome to attend the second portion. Have one. Set, okay, all in favor? I, close. Good evening, everyone.